Hello, I'm Debbie Kaye, Vice President of the League of Women Voters of Portland. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that works to help citizens make informed choices in elections. We do not endorse any candidate or political party, but rather, we give voters the information they need to make informed choices to select a candidate. Membership information is available on our website. We want to thank the Carol and Velma Sailing Foundation, the Rose E. Tucker Charitable Trust, the Multnomah Bar Foundation, Metro East Community Media, and Paloma Clothing for their generous contributions to our education fund to make these forums possible. Today's forum is being recorded by our beloved partner, Metro East Community Media. This forum will be available for on-demand viewing from a link on our website, l w v p d x dot org, and from the website of Metro East Community Media, metroeast.org. To view the forums on local access cable TV, see the playback schedule posted on our website. The deadline to register to vote was yesterday, but you can still verify your registration or change your address or political party. Contact the county elections office, or search online, and you may also find the online link on the League of Women Voters website. Ballots are in the mail, and you should receive yours very soon. I will now turn the forum over to our moderator, Linda Mather.
Thanks, Debbie. And welcome to this forum for candidates for Multnomah County Commissioner, District Four. The League of Women Voters has invited all of the candidates running for this office. Present today, and seated at my left, in the order in which they will appear on the ballot, are Amanda Schrader and Lori Stegman. Welcome to you both. Each of the candidates will give a two-minute opening statement, followed by questions that have been prepared. They will then have a one and a half minute to answer each question. Our volunteer timekeepers are sitting in the front row, and they will give a 15-second warning as well as a stop. The order in which we select candidates to answer the questions ensures that we are all able, that they are all able, to answer first and last an equal number of times. Following our prepared questions, we will have questions from the audience. Finally, candidates will each give a one-minute closing statement. Now we'll turn to the opening statement. Each candidate has two minutes to introduce herself and her platform, and again, we'll do this in ballot order. Therefore, Ms. Schrader, would you start us off?
Thank you, Linda.
I think you should be okay with that, but maybe move just a smidgen closer to yourself. There you go.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Schrader. I am a lifelong East County resident, well, pretty close to East County. I grew up in Boring, Oregon, went to Sandy High School, Multnomah, or Mount Hood Community College. I pretty much only left the area when I went off to Oregon State and joined the Army. When I got done with my time in the military, I came home and went to graduate school while my husband was deployed in support of Operation Enduring Freedom. I had our young daughter with us. I got my master's degree in education, and when I saw how difficult of a time my sisters and brothers at arms were having when they were coming back from war, I went to work for the Department of Veterans Affairs as a veteran service representative. And there, I served as congressional liaison, which is where I saw what incredible good our electeds can do for people, and I thought, this is what I want to be when I grow up. So I've looked around, I've watched things happen in my community, I've seen us grow. I've seen us grow greatly, sometimes too fast for what we're able to handle, and that's pretty much why I decided to run for this office. My priorities are public safety, health and human services, and infrastructure, because I think if our streets aren't safe, if we don't have our first responders, then pretty much nothing's going to be safe. And health and human services, I think there are so many things that people need out here, especially with the mass amount of people who are moving to East County due to gentrification. I just want to make sure that our services are ready for them, and I want to have a feeling of community, and I want to welcome all people as they come to East County and grow our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stegman.
Thank you, Linda. My name is Lori Stegman, and I'm running for Multnomah County Commission, District Four. And District Four goes from about southeast 148th East all the way out to Multnomah Falls. So it covers Gresham, Fairview, Troutdale, Wood Village, Corbett, and Springdale. So for the last six years, I've served as a Gresham City Councilor and a Gresham Redevelopment Commissioner. Prior to that, I served on the Planning Commission. I've been a longtime seroptimist, and I've worked with many nonprofits and many other nonprofits to help our most vulnerable friends and neighbors. I grew up in the Rockwood neighborhood, where I've located my small business for the last 17 years, but the job I'm most proud of is being a mom to my daughter Rachel, who is a junior at Barlow High School. So the question I get asked most often is, why am I running? I'm running because I want kids in our community to have the same opportunities that I was so lucky to have as an immigrant. I was born in Soul Korea, and I was adopted when I was six months old. I was so fortunate to have a loving family, food, shelter, and access to a quality education. As an adult, I put myself through college as a secretary while I worked myself through school, and I went to Mount Hood Community College, and then went on to Portland State and got my Bachelor of Science in Business. I truly am one of the lucky ones, and I know that not all people in this community have the same access to those opportunities, and that's why I want to run. My experience as a public servant, a successful small-business owner, and a longtime community volunteer make me the most qualified candidate, but it is my heart and passion to lift people out of poverty and into prosperity that drives me and will make me the most effective leader. So to accomplish that, I will work on three things: housing, affordability, education, and jobs.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to turn to the first question, and it's one of those lovely ones that only takes 90 seconds. How will you address the connected issues of mental and physical health, substance abuse, and homelessness more effectively? We'll start with you, Ms. Schrader. You want me to do it again?
Yes, please.
It's okay. How will you address the connected issues of mental and physical health, substance abuse, and homelessness more effectively?
Well, I think that that's where my prioritization of health and human services and, you know, infrastructure come in. The Surgeon General in his report last October said, for livability statistics, that the fourth most important thing is to have walkable communities. And we don't have a lot of really walkable communities. We don't have adequate sidewalk signage and all of those things that make it a real safe place for people to go out and actually stretch their legs and walk down the street and know their community, know their neighbors. And I think that putting, investing into the people who work for Multnomah County in providing those services is incredibly important.
Ms. Stegman?
So I think we need to take a comprehensive approach. There's an organization called P H C that provides folks with affordable housing as well as job training. Many of the folks in their program work as janitors, they're part of a union, so that those folks are connected to wraparound services. So not only do they have a job, but they're guaranteed a roof over their head, and then they also have access to other resources like mental health and other social service agencies that they need. So I think it has to be, we can't address just one issue because it's so much more complex, and that we really have to attack the issue of homelessness from every front that we can.
Okay, and we'll start with you now again, Ms. Stegman. Estimates indicate that over 200,000 people will be added to the county over the next two decades. What is your vision for how the county can manage this growth?
Well, I think we have to do better with what we have, number one. Hopefully, if we can educate people and get them into family-wage jobs, the growth won't be an issue. It won't be a barrier, it will be a plus, because if people have family-wage jobs, then they'll be able to contribute to the tax base, which will in turn allow us to have more funding to fund the services that many of our friends and neighbors need. Lots of folks are elderly or disabled and are not in a position to work. So I think that the economic development that can come from those 200,000 people will help benefit our community.
Okay, Ms. Schrader?
200,000, that's a lot. It's a big number, and I think that there are a lot of things that we can do to prepare for those, for that amount of people who's going to be coming. I think one of the things that we really need to work on is transportation in the area and get north-south running buses so that we can have more jobs out here indirectly in East County, so people can actually work where they live, so that we can actually kind of reduce that carbon footprint and people aren't, you know, having to spend, you know, 45 minutes going into town and 45 minutes coming back. If we have that many people, having people being able to work where they live and live where they work, I think, would be really, really helpful. So having north-south running buses and bringing more businesses out to East County, I think, would be a really great way to deal with having that kind of growth and trying to avoid the, having freeways like Los Angeles, because that's terrible.
Okay, let's try another question, and Ms. Schrader will start us, if you would. When funding social services, how does the county equitably address the geographic distribution of people experiencing poverty?
I don't know that it does flawlessly at this point in time, to be perfectly honest. I think we have a lot of inequity. There's a lot of, there's a lot of social services ensuring that, that poverty is such an incredible problem, and we see it more and more in our communities of color. And when we have incredible dispersment of people in communities due to gentrification, like when they pluck a group of people up and move them eastbound so that they can, you know, make, you know, really fancy or hip houses in Portland, I think it really hugely negatively affects how services are rendered. And I think that we're often not prepared, you know, where services are contained right now or maintained or set up, that's not where the services are needed anymore since people have moved, and they've been dispersed and spread around so much, I think that we need to have, do some serious mapping of finding out where the needs are and ensuring that we are dispersing our services appropriately to the people who need it the most, those that are most vulnerable, and those who need to have solid roots here in East County.
Thank you, Ms. Stegman.
Thank you. In my role as a Gresham City Councilor, we just submitted a letter to the governor regarding the potential move of the DHS office in Gresham. They are proposing that it be moved to 122nd. This is a travesty. We know that for many years, there's been a disinvestment if you live on the other side of I-205. And there's a difference between equality and equity. People that live in East County, there is a larger need, a larger population, and so those resources need to be reallocated. And instead of service providers leaving this area, we need more. So I will continue to be a strong advocate to stand up and say to the state of Oregon and the governor, you need to have that DHS office here to serve the people that so badly need those services.
Okay. Another inequity question, unfortunately, and Ms. Stegman, if you'd start us. How can the county address the inequities in incarceration in county jails?
Well, that's a much broader question. I know the Charter Review Committee for the county is looking at all of those issues. I believe that the best form of government that I've experienced is where you have a city manager or county manager and council. And then under that city manager or county manager, they serve at the pleasure of the board, and then the chief of police reports to that city or county manager. That's how it works at the city of Gresham. And to have kind of a rogue entity that has no direct reporting to the board, I think there's not enough oversight. And if you're all moving in the same direction, then you can accomplish and collaborate, and then you can really work on those issues. So I think it's a much greater issue, and that the only way that the county's going to be able to get their hands around it is by having more control of the sheriff's budget and also by doing audits, so that the commission can make sure that they can address those inequities.
Thank you. Ms. Schrader?
Can I get you to repeat the question one more time, please?
I can find it again. Here we go. How can the county address the inequities in incarceration in county jails?
I think that that's a really great question, Linda, and it's one that I wish that I had a beat-all, end-all response, but the fact of the matter is, is this is not just a problem here in Multnomah County, this is a systemic problem throughout the United States. There is inequity in jails and in the prison system throughout the country that are, and the statistics are so shameful and horrific that it boggles the mind. So how do we deconstruct the construct of white privilege and, you know, the implications of that? And just answer how we're going to make sure that our county jails don't reflect what the rest of the country is reflecting? Well, I think it's going to take a lot of courageous conversations, and it's going to take, take a lot of cultural awareness training, and it's going to take a great investment in our young people to let them know that they're valued and that there is a place for them in this community that is not, you know, this, you know, you're not going to be able to beat the system, so you might as well be part of the system, kind of idea. So courageous conversations and oversight, I guess, is the best I can do.
All right. Well, let's try this question. Describe your vision of a consumer-centered behavioral health system. Ms. Schrader?
A consumer-centered behavioral health system. Well, I think that we need to have 24-hour access to mental health services because of the fact that, as I stated before in my statement in the book, crises rarely follow a business model, business hour process, and those who are in greatest crises need to have availability to mental health services. I think that, I think that we need to invest very heavily in mental health services because I think, especially in how depressed economically East County is, I think that, that we need to invest very heavily in the rehabilitation and the success of those people, and that means ensuring that they have 24-hour access to quality healthcare, mental health care or behavioral health services.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Stegman?
Well, I think mental health should be something that should be just ingrained in our society. A lot of times, people just don't have the basic skills of conflict management. At the city of Gresham, we have a mediation department that helps people with those skills, but a lot of these skills are learned and can be taught. And oftentimes, I think I see people that are fearful or angry, and they don't know how to appropriately express themselves. There's a program that Reynolds School District has done that I'm a volunteer at, and it's an anti-bullying campaign, and where we go spend a full seven, eight hours with kids, and we teach them practices about how to handle conflict or if somebody's bullying you. And so I think by just, it's kind of like teaching people to walk, or just giving kids those basic tools and necessities that they need so that they can go out and cope. Beyond that, you know, we need mental health services that are just part of, just like you go for your annual checkup. There should be accessibility for people who want to have a mental health professional so that they can discuss whatever barriers or issues that they're facing.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Stegman, start us on this one. The county chair and Portland mayor have been working together on several issues, such as housing and homelessness and other social concerns. What further issues would you want to work on with Portland city government, or for that matter, with governments of other cities in the county?
Well, I think we're doing a pretty good example right now. So we have a Home for Everyone, which is a coalition to address the issue of homelessness, which is City of Portland, City of Gresham, Multnomah County, and Home Forward. So that is the exact type of collaboration that's going to be required if we really want to find meaningful solutions to the issue of homelessness. Also, there is a huge duplicate of services, and that's why right now, the city of Portland deals with single homeless individuals where the county deals with families. And I know Chair Kofore, Kofore and Mayor Hales are working together to try to streamline that process. So I think that there are many opportunities for the city of Portland to work with the county. Another example is the accessory dwelling units, where the city of Portland incentivized people to build these additional dwellings, but then when it came tax time, these folks found out that their tax bills had doubled, and they were not expecting that. There was a little hiccup at the county, and so the county and the city should really be working together to increase the housing stock, and that's one way that they could work together to do that.
Ms. Schrader?
That was a really long question.
Yeah, sure. Do you want to try it again?
Yes, please.
Sure. The county chair and Portland mayor have been working together on several issues, such as housing and homelessness. What further issues would you want to work with Portland city government or other city governments?
There's so much to be done, trying to pick one particular program. I would really, I'd really love to see outdoor school for everybody. I think that that's an incredible opportunity, and I would like to see all the moving parts get together and make it happen. I think it's something that's a really great informative experience for kids, especially those who are in urban areas who haven't had the opportunity to go out into the woods, although we're pretty, pretty lucky here in the Portland area where we have Forest Park and all of these other places that are fairly accessible, but to some, they're not. And I think that providing that really incredible outdoor education experience to all children, you know, gives them some legs to stand on and some fresh air to breathe, and maybe some new perspective that will give them a little bit more hope and a little more push towards success and investment.
Let's try this one. What distinguishes you from all the other candidates who are running for this office?
Well, like Lori, I'm a mom, so that doesn't distinguish me, but I have two amazing children, both of them in public school. I'm a breast cancer survivor. I was diagnosed with very aggressive breast cancer at 37. I'm an Army veteran. I lived in Europe in college. I taught English in France. I am a lifelong giver. I'm a giver. I'm a middle child. I'm a peacekeeper, and I have such a spirit of service. I am the president of my union. I sit on our Human Rights Committee at a national level, and I'm serving my second term there. I represent federal employees in eight states on issues relevant to human rights, civil rights, and workers' rights. I want to make the world a better place, and I think that, you know, one thing I learned in the Army, besides, you know, I can rappel from a helicopter skid, is that given the right group of people and the right mission, you can get anything accomplished. And so I think I bring with me a very long life's worth of experience in a short, shorter, I don't know, I turned 40 this year, amount of time, and I'm really excited about the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Stegman.
Thank you. I think I'm the most qualified candidate for several reasons. I have extensive political experience, being on the Gresham City Council for the last six years. Prior to that, I was on the Planning Commission, and I also currently serve as a Gresham Redevelopment Commissioner. One of the things I'm most excited about is that we'll be breaking ground in January at that site, and we're going to have a presence from Mount Hood Community College, a Maker Space, Alphina Community Bank, the Employment Office, and we're also going to make the components of a grocery store. So I have a lot of expertise in how to build an infrastructure that will help move people out of poverty and into prosperity. Also, I have a lot of community activism experience and nonprofit. I've been a seroptimist for almost 15 years. We do the annual teddy bear parade. Our mission is to improve the lives of women and children. And then I have business experience as a small-business owner for the last 22 years. I understand what it takes. In challenging times, my family had to sacrifice, like many, through the Great Recession, but we did it by not taking any expense for granted, and that's the same type of approach that I'll take at the county.
Thank you. Now, let's try this one. Well, I'll just read it the way it's here. Do you, as candidates, know about county assets like Vance Pit? I'm sorry, I did it wrong. Vance Pit and landfill and the pig farm. Now, there's a second question, which might work better. These are or were mothballed county properties, basically public green space amenities full of trees and wildlife, but what is their future? Can you do it?
Yes, I'm very familiar with Vance Park, and there is a gravel pit. So this is the park on like 182nd and Division, and directly behind the park is a gravel pit. This is something that the county, we have been trying, I have been trying for many years as a Gresham City Councilor, to have the county give up the rights to the back of Vance Park. That area someday could be developed, but my understanding is that it's a brownfield. So I get conflicting stories, and that's one of the very first things that I want to look at, is what can be done, can redevelopment occur in the pit? We may have to do some rezoning, but that could be a tremendous asset for future development. When you talk about the urban growth boundary and that we're very limited about where we can build housing, this could be a really great opportunity to add some additional housing stock.
Ms. Schrader, do you want to add?
I would definitely have to look into that.
Okay, fair enough. So let's turn to our closing statements, and you will be first, Ms. Schrader, if you would, for one minute.
As I stated before, my name's Amanda Schrader. I'm running for Multnomah County Commissioner, District Four. I'm a proud Army veteran, breast cancer survivor. I'm third-generation Union here in Oregon. I grew up here, and I'm incredibly, incredibly dedicated to improving the circumstances of all of the people of East County, of all of Multnomah County. And I firmly believe that a rising tide lifts all boats, so I would ask all of you to vote for me on May 17th. Thank you.
Ms. Schrader?
Thank you. When I'm elected, I will make every effort to make sure that all the stakeholders are at the table. Together, we will find common sense solutions to our most pressing problems like the housing crisis. crisis, the lack of family-wage jobs, and also, very important, the education needed to get those family-wage jobs. These are all really complex issues, and unfortunately, there is no magic wand that we can wave to solve them. But what we have to do is we have to pull together as a community and row in the same direction. One of my favorite proverbs says, "If you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together." I'm here to ask you to join me today. I need your help to give East County a larger role and a louder voice. Together, we can do this. Thank you so much, and I hope I can count on your vote.
Thank you. This concludes the League of Women Voters Forum for candidates for County Commissioner, District Four. We thank the candidates for participating and, in fact, for running. It speaks well of our democracy. Thanks also to all our timekeepers and other volunteers for making this happen tonight. Please check our website, l w v p d x dot org, to view all of our forums on demand and for replay dates, times, and channels for local access cable television. Pick up, my AV here, a voter's guide at your local public library, at the elections office, or at a new season's market. Online, you can check vote411.org as a guide to your personal ballot. Election Day is May 17th. As in all Oregon elections, you will receive a mail-in ballot, or mine showed up today. Ballots must be mailed back early or delivered to an official drop-off site anywhere in Oregon no later than 8:00 PM on Tuesday, May 17th, and postmarks do not count. Thank you for watching. Please be an informed voter. Have these discussions about the issues with your friends and family, and do remember that your vote counts. Thank you.